Okay.
You feel pretty good today?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it must be feeling better.
I do, it's a good day. It is a good day.
So, continue, social distance up there.
Call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the May 24th, 2022 regular scheduled court City Council meeting in the Linda Hartlove. City Council members, please stand for questions, requests, stories, and among the sounds for those to attend.
To the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord in heaven, how would be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this state of our daily life, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we is not tempted to change, but the Lord has given us power and glory forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, you may be seated. Seeing that our court is absent this evening, I will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Gilman as a temporary clerk.
We make a motion.
I'll second. Thank you, the motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to appoint Mrs. Gilman as a temporary clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. The court, please call the roll.
Kelly Gangl, here.
Pat Hovis.
Here.
Beth Gilman, here. Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Richard Morgan.
Here.
Margaret Phillips.
Here.
Jerry Trolley.
Present.
Thank you. Council, you previously received the May 10, 2022 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President, I would move to approve the minutes from the chances of making.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to approve the May 10, 2022 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The chair note that certification has been made regarding compliance with rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation. Please publicly comment.
Yes, we form 433 Huron Court.
If you could stand, you can stand where you're at, or come to the podium, whichever.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna be very nice today, okay? We have major issues on the West End with rodents, blighted buildings, uncut yards, animals living under these houses, and people are actually living in them. And I know that I've talked, I've been asking for this for how long now?
Long, long, long time, yes.
Years. And it's just getting to the point now where my grandkids can't even play in my own yard because of animal crap out there. And I sit in my yard and I watch the groundhog run from house to house. I went behind one the other day, took some pictures, old family groundhog back there. Baby one, big one. And then today I find out on Garfield Street, somebody got a goat. They also have a, had parked a camper there, and had electrical cord running from the house to the camper, and someone's living in it. It's just not acceptable. I've been asking for too long, and too many different people, and nothing, nothing has been done. So I emailed all this information to the Health Department, Environmental Department, because it seems like down here, nothing is happening. I have a list here of all the properties. It has property address, the owner of that property, and the ordinance, your city ordinance, that it's violating. Now, you're here to represent us, and I begged and begged, and nothing is happening. Nothing. I mean, you come out, you act like you're gonna do something, you come talk to me, I assume that's just to pacify me, oh, he'll be cool after this. It's just not right, people. Those people shouldn't have to live like that. And I don't know where to turn now, because I ran out of options. And I put in all this effort to try to find all these properties owners and all that stuff. And if you own that property, you're responsible for it. Now, what I would like to ask you guys, what if this same thing was Monroe Street, Taff Street, Fifth Street? Would you let a guy with 20 motor, rundown motorcycles in his yard, a camper on the backside, been sitting there for years, three or four cars, no license plates on him? How long would that last on Monroe Street? Anybody? Just, seriously, I'm just asking. So why is it lasting for years where I live in my neighborhood? And nobody, not a single one of you, have done anything other than talk a big game? Now, ordinance are being broken, and you need to enforce them.
I believe that ordinance enforcement would be actually in the Police Department to file violations.
Let Ms. Shanker talk, because there's some things that she needs to discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Horn, if I could answer your concerns. We received your list. I have filed zoning violations. I can go through the properties with you. The first one is...
Will you receive that for me?
Yep. Well, it went through Ms. Gilman.
Went through Beth.
It went through Ms. Gilman. I personally drove out there, personally took pictures with Ken Johnson.
You wanna see some of my pictures?
Yeah, I went out there with Ken Johnson from the Fire Chief, and we went through, and we have the ordinance listed. All of the different ordinances listed in the, in... So for each one, what we did was we checked off what they were violating, and so they had 21 days to answer us. The next step is they're going to be out of county municipal court for charges. Some called and said that they're working on the properties, so since they did call, there's a procedure that they have to go through, that they're allowed to go through. The ones who did not answer us at all, they're going directly to court. I can read those out loud for you, since they are nuisance to both you and us and the city. The first one is Yolanda Torres. She's the landlord of 920 Ohio. Robert Lampella, he is the landlord of 942, 9 to 944 Virginia. Elias Gonzalez, he is the landlord to 831 to 839 Michigan. Michael Holbrook, he is the landlord to 328 Garfield. Ronald Gibson, now he is a resident, and he is having some issues, but he is trying at 318 Superior. Melvin Cox and Jason Hunter, they're the landlords to 435, 441 Huron.
No, that would be 433, 431 Huron.
Okay, I had 435 or 441.
There's only one unit there. That was the house I grew up in as a kid. I can tell you everything you wanna know about that one. If you go in there and jump this high off the ground, you're going right to the ground, right to it.
They're the ones with the grass issues all the time.
Grass issue, they got a whole family of groundhog.
Okay, they're the groundhog people, okay. We got them. Michael Baker, he is also the landlord of 828 Michigan. And Robert Havens, he's the one with all the junk cars and the yard that looks like a junkyard.
Like Saffron Sun?
Yes, and so he's at 318 Garfield. He has already gone to municipal court, I believe, once, paid a fine, but this time I will be there, so he's not gonna be able to just pay a fine.
I gotta say, since, since that, they moved a camper in.
Okay.
There, and they're living in it.
It's a motor home.
Motor home, or whatever it is.
I didn't see that, but we'll...
And also, I just learned today that they got a goat.
Oh, okay, so he's the goat and the camper.
Yeah, they got a goat running loose.
Okay. So, we are definitely trying. Unfortunately, with our zoning code, there is a bit of a process. First, they have 21 days, and then if they request a little bit of extra time because they're working on it, they get 60 extra days. The ones that we haven't heard from, I'm gonna be filing on them in the municipal court. They can go in front of Judge Borgo, and they can pay. It's a minor misdemeanor it starts with, which is the fine, and then it goes up in severity. And then the judge usually tells them that for every day they don't fix it, it could be an extra additional charge. So, and he usually gives them how many other days to fix it before, you know, they have to pay extra fines, extra charges. So hopefully, this will motivate these people. The property that is, the one that is, it looks like, like you can go through it, there's no windows. You know what I'm talking about on Garfield? That just traded, they just sold it. The Popsins owned it.
$10,000?
And Hol, huh?
$10,000?
$10,000. And Michael Holbrook bought it, so that's a, so I don't know anything to do with it. But he has been put on notice that that's on our list. And then also, I received a newer one, which I still have to get a letter out to, which is Ronald Walk, Ronald and Crystal Walker, which is 435 Huron. So they're gonna get a letter. They're not the only ones. We have been going through the city, and other people have been getting letters as well. So, we are trying to get this...
Maybe if we'd started this five or six years ago, when I first started complaining about it, we'd be somewhere by now.
I wasn't here five or six years ago, so...
Somebody was here, this is somebody within your seat.
But we are definitely working at it, and we're gonna keep plugging away until we can see some changes, especially with the rodents were very aware where I saw. I saw myself when I was out there, and it's, it's gonna have to change.
Now, what about that church? I got Melvin Cox groundhog here at my house, and I got this church with the dead animals in it. And the guy that goes in, that was in there, told me they can't go in there no more because they had to wear a full hazmat suit to go in there.
Right, so I spoke with Fire Chief Pep Johnson, and that is accurate. So there's bats in there.
Bats? And they're dead in my yard also, which I ain't enjoying a whole lot.
And because of the bats, I guess because of their feces, it is now, you cannot go in there.
Right.
Without a full hazmat suit. It's completely closed off. We tried, we got out of the car, and we pulled on all the doors, you cannot go in there. But, right now, it's, I'm not sure who owns at this point.
I know who owns it. Havens owns it.
The Robert Havens?
I think it's Robert.
Okay.
I know exactly who owns it. He's the one telling me that it was unfit to go in there.
Yeah, you cannot go in there. It's actually dangerous to go in there now. If they're current on their taxes, and it's boarded up to where it's not an issue to the public because it's boarded up, there's really not much that can be done.
There is, it is an issue to the public. I got dead bats in my yard.
Okay, yeah.
And if that be an issue to you, it's an issue to me.
Right, I mean, you know, that's something where you'd have to get the Health Department out there.
That's what I've, I've got a thing into the Health Department right now.
I called, I called Pep Johnson out, Fire Chief, have him see that bats in your yard. I don't think he was aware that they were actually in your yard.
Yes.
He believed they were contained inside of the church.
No, I watch the squirrels every day go in and out of that church. Every day.
Do you see where they're going in?
Yeah, they go in, they get on the roof, and they go to the side, and go right up under the gutters, right in.
You're gonna have to show him how they're getting in.
Yeah.
Because if they're getting in, then stuff is coming out, so it's gonna have to be sealed off. I, we're trying to figure out a solution for that, I just don't know what it is at this point. They're gonna have to get EPA involved, get other, other governmental agencies involved. But unfortunately, who knew bat feces was such a toxic...
I did.
Feces, and with so many bats in there, it's, you know, they have to, you have to figure, I don't know what they're gonna do, but we're gonna try to get...
They need to get it down and go on bye-bye.
Right, you need to get other agencies. The problem is, is gotta get them out, gotta get that stuff out of the church first, so...
Well, shouldn't that be up to the owner of that property?
If he wants to do anything.
What do you mean, if he wants to do anything? If the property's like that, he, he, his choices gotta be getting lower. What do you mean, if he want to? No, you do something about this. This is an issue, a health issue.
It's a health issue. And that's something where we're gonna have to look into contacting other agencies to see what we can do. And that's, we're working on that. But we need to see what we can do with, with... If it was just an empty building, it would be a different story, but bat feces is what's really becoming the issue at this point, so...
Now, are there State Departments that can do anything about that?
That's what we're looking into.
I've been trying to do some research on that myself.
Yeah, that's what we're looking into, see. We reached out to the Ohio Department of Commerce to see if there's other agencies that can help us. And they're gonna let us know, brainstorming to see who else we can get to, to help us, basically.
Like I said, look, I don't wanna be confrontational. I wanna work with you guys to get this stuff done, but I don't wanna be just blowed off like that. Because that's what I feel like happened for the last five or six years. But I've been doing this for a long time, complaining about the same thing over and over. But I'm willing to work with you. If we can figure a way to get some of this done, that's great. But I would not sit, I would never stop. I will continue to fight, because there are some people out there who have pretty nice properties. And then you sit on your porch, and you gotta look at that.
Well, it's...
Nobody wants to see that.
It, it's very frustrating, because the letters that were sent out were to landlords who do not even live in the city. They're, you know, out-of-city landlords, like we have one Tiffin on Norwalk, Mr. Lampella, somewhere in Florida. And they're receiving rent for properties that probably shouldn't be standing upright. So, we're gonna, hopefully...
Now, does the city still have the land bank thing, where they can get those properties and tear them down?
They do, but the problem is, is in order to have the land bank involved, the properties have to be vacant. And when there's people living in them, the land bank can't do anything with them.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
First of all, if you've been fighting this for five years, and you said you're being friendly, you are being friendly for putting up...
For me, yes.
Yeah, I understand that.
I suck at that.
Most of these units are owned by someone, and the people renting them are the... That's the difficulty. I mean, the landlord lives somewhere else, and the people live in the trailers, people with the groundhogs are renters.
Right.
And they're paying their rent. So the guy in Florida, they're saying, fine, I'm getting my money, I don't care.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, leave out the church, because that sounds like it's a special problem.
Church is...
You know, I mean, bats are also protected species, you can't just blow them up. I, I, but, okay, but the other ones, and I understand your frustration, but again, she hasn't been on the job for so long. My question is, the wheels of justice take a long time. About how long can he look to get some satisfaction here? In a month, two months, a year? How long will this take before? Because if you, you find them, that won't do a darn thing, and then eventually, you're gonna have to have the police or whatever, and that takes time. How long does he have to get, even if you don't get them all of them fixed?
So...
What's the time period we're talking about?
We're walking a fine line. We're walking a very fine line, because these are landlord-owned properties, and there are tenants. And at one point, we wanna be very careful, because we do not want either the landlord or the court to say that's it.
And just kick everybody out, right?
Because now we're gonna...
Nobody wants that.
Right, because then we're gonna have people...
I don't want that either.
Right, then we're gonna have people without homes.
Right.
And, you know, unfortunately, there's a reason why people live in conditions like that. You know, either they can't afford to live elsewhere, or they have some issues on their credit, where they can't, you know, or poor Clinton is so short on housing. So we have to be really careful. We wanna motivate the landlords to fix up the properties short of kicking people out.
So, do I have this right, that even temptation may become really down hard on the landlord? You're afraid if you come down too hard, he'll just say, screw it, yeah, I'll just close it down, and you guys now have no place to go? And you're trying, that's the fine line you're trying to walk, right?
Well, when you, when you look at the sanctions, the progression of the sanctions, eventually foreclosure is down the road. And you wanna, you wanna stop short of that, because you do not want to necessarily foreclose a property where there are tenants.
Right.
But on the other hand, if there's a tenant living in an unsafe property, they shouldn't be living there.
Right, but the problem is...
So that means maybe the city or somebody else gotta try to figure out somewhere for these people to live?
Well, that's the problem. Where would they go?
But if you're living in an unhealthy place, and you get sick...
Oh, I agree with you.
Then you get sick in there, what, what's, what's that then?
I agree with you. They're not, they're not good places. That's why we wanna try to get them to fix it. But the other thing is, this is the exterior property code. It's not the interior property code.
Oh, go inside somewhere.
So, some of these places have dirt floors. I mean, some of these places are not even where people should be living. So, I mean, you know, we're, we're trying to fix the outside, and hopefully get these people motivated, these landlords. I mean, shame on them for even charging rent for some of these homes where people are living. But unfortunately, you know, this is the situation we're in. These, these homes that were built were never meant to be permanent residences for people. They were never meant to be permanent residences. And, you know, you have people who've purchased them, and they don't, they don't take care of them. So, we're trying, we're trying to do something.
You feel so much asbestos sliding.
Yeah. We're trying to do something. You know, I mean, I wish we could just say, you know what, come on, let's, let's get you somewhere else, but the answer is where?
Now, I understand your difficulty, I understand his anger.
It's a fine line, and it's, and, yeah.
And the question obviously is, how can a landlord do that? But I know people do that.
Yeah.
I, I...
I mean, I sit there and watch people throw food out to these, to these cats and animals. So about, maybe two years ago, I'm looking out my window, I watched this lady throwing food out into the yard for these cats. And I opened my window, and I said, this is exactly what I said, work for work. But it was one bad word, stop feeding the effing cats. 10 minutes later, police at my house, a protection order. Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
It didn't go anywhere, but still, I mean, that's just ridiculous. You can't even speak, you can't even say nothing.
We're looking at, Ms. Gilman and I were talking about looking at an ordinance where, you know, try to get people to not feed the cats. I mean, it, it's, it's kinda like you're getting on the hamster wheel, and you're running around, you're running on the wheel. I mean, sometimes it's almost for nothing, but all we can do is try and see what we can do. But, I agree with you, it's, it's, it's a tough situation, and it's almost like, you know, you try to fix A, and B's falling apart. Then you try to fix B, and then A's falling back apart. So you never know which one you're trying to fix. But to answer your question, Mr. Morgan, I can get him into court, hopefully soon, within the next month. I can get him to court.
And then, yeah.
And then we'll see what happens. We can keep, you know, we can become a big thorn in their side, you know, I mean, maybe to a point where they might do something, but...
And, and the problem isn't just landlords, obviously some of the tenants are just doing it.
Well, I have people call me, I have people come to my house, they're like, hey, man, can you do something? I'm not on the City Council. But they come to me because they know I'm gonna stand up for them.
Right, and they're, you know...
Like the girl, she just got a Habitat home built. Beautiful little house, fenced in, nice, beautiful yard. Right across the street from her, eight junk cars and motorcycles sitting in the yard with animals running all over. She don't wanna look at that.
Right, we've had the police go through, they have gone through to check the tags and cite for that. So we have been doing that, because we do have the ordinance.
You know, I just rode around the other day, and they were still there with no tags on them. So when are you doing this?
Well, they cite them, and then they go to court. I mean, they're not, you know, they can't tow the car, they have to cite them for them to go to court. So unfortunately, it's, sometimes it takes a while, because when you get cited, you go into court, you get an arraignment date. And if you wanna fight it, then, you know, two, three weeks later, you get a pre-trial, so it's, takes a little bit of time. I've been trying to coordinate with the court, so I can be at the arraignment, so I can talk to the judge and put in my two cents, so they can't just pay a fine, so they do have the sanctions right up front. So that way, they don't get that free pass. It's a lot easier to pay a fine and just leave and not do anything, but I want the sanctions up front. So that way, they get hit up front. So we're, we're, we're working on it. We're trying to get a lot of this done. It's new for the court, too, because they're kinda like, well, we usually just issue a fine. And I'm like, well, I wanna be there because I wanna talk. So we're, we're getting, we're trying to get some things ironed out.
Like I said, I'm, I'm willing to work with you guys, try to get it done, but, I mean, after year, after year, after year, after year, doing the same thing over and over and over. And you, and I know Council people here, because I've called them. I've called several. I mean, and just nothing, getting nothing.
Well...
And I'm not saying it's their fault. I mean, it's the way the system's set up. I'm not saying it's their fault, but they listen to me and talk to me. But I mean, it gets frustrating when I gotta sit, when I gotta look at my little grandson with cat mess on his shoes, and I ain't got no cat.
Right. Well, I have, I have the letters, I have, you know, here for you, if you wanna take a look, but we're gonna see what we can do.
Ms. Shanker, I have a question. Some of these people are out-of-town owners?
They're all out-of-town owners, with the exception of one.
Well, Dr. Florida, what if they don't respond to the letter? Then what?
Then we can move forward.
Which is...
She's taking it right to court.
Taking it right to court.
What if you can't, like, we've got the one in Florida, do we really know where he lives?
So, the one in Florida, we're, I have a feeling we're not gonna be able to serve him. Basically, at that point, you take this letter, and you find a tree or whatever on the property, and you attach it to that, and they consider that service at that point. And then we move forward. With this, you know, we could file an injunction, and maybe with an injunction, you can find a third party to clean it up, and then the third party can get, take the lead on the property. So if, you know, the property does get foreclosed on, that third party is gonna be the first in line to get the property. So if you have somebody who likes to flip properties or likes to do things like that, we might be able to get some interest in like, somebody who's a contractor, and be able to flip the properties, you know, and work out who owns whoever lives there, or, you know, something where we can get this moving. So that's another option. But Mr. Lampella has been an issue with other properties, so if we, if it comes back, that we, we haven't served him, it's gonna be literally going out there and attaching it to something, the property, attaching the notice, and then that will be considered a service for him. And then we'll see, we just have to find people who are interested in that kind of work. Are you interested in that kind of work?
No, no, no. It's not always the landlords, there's two else talking to me. My neighbor died, and when he died, my man bought it, fixed it all up. And within a week, the renters had tore the street corners off the house, they had destroyed, they had two motors tore up in the yard, it looked like. So it's not always just the landlord.
Well, what I, what I indicated is, the property, the letters that I wrote are landlord-owned properties. So here, we're sending them to the landlord, saying, hey, you know what? You own these properties, you're collecting rent. It's your job, under the zoning code, to fix these properties. You know, and I understand tenants, sometimes are not the best tenants. They may have, you know, trashed the properties. But unfortunately, if you're the landlord, you're collecting rent, you have to keep the property up to code. So we're gonna try it this way. If not, we'll try it a different way, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep trying, and we're gonna go see about a goat, apparently tomorrow, so...
This couple here, I'm in bear contact with, be quite often, about issues down their street.
Do you live next door to the goat?
Garfield.
Yeah, I live next door to the goat. And if I get home and find my flowers tore up, 'cause that goat was running loose, and I got a picture of it, and I can show you on my phone. That goat, that, I'm gonna be mad, and I'm gonna call the police, and I'm gonna have them put out there, and I don't care what they do, that goat. A goat does not belong inside city limits.
No, it does not.
They're the ones that have the motor home.
Yeah.
And there are people living in that motor home.
So the motor home must be new?
No, well, they've had it out there for about two weeks. No, well, they've had it out there for about two weeks. And they finally towed the duly that sat there for a year that had trees growing in it.
Yeah.
Um, they finally towed it and then they towed this motor home now. And I mean, they literally towed it in.
So obviously, we do have an ordinance. You can't live in a motor home. We'll go out there and allow-
Um, the, the motor home is not fit to live in. It looks like it had caught fire at one time. Um, but there is, Havens is owner, Robert Havens owns it. And his daughter and granddaughter are living in that motor home. Okay? The motor home is so wide and their street is narrow anyway.
Is it on the street or is it on the street?
Yeah, it's on the street, on the street.
And they got a cord coming out going underneath, through the fence, and across the ground with a tarp on top of it so you can't see it. They're trying to hide it. And then it goes up the wall and in the house.
Okay.
Um, I watched them in the camper the other night, the lights flickering in there. So they're in the camper. Um, that motor home is so wide that I can, I literally have to have my entire car pulled out of my driveway before I can see either way coming out of the street. I cannot hurt my driveway because of the way, the way the car is. Someone coming from the, from the south side is not gonna be able to see anyone pulling out of the driveway and everybody hitting it. They've got chain, they've got privacy fencing leaning against their chain link fencing, pushing their fence over onto our property. When it collapses, and it will because, okay, we've owned our house there for forty-four years. Okay? That chain link has been there twenty years longer than we've owned our house. So that chain link is gonna give sooner or later. And when you got that much weight, 'cause they've got about twelve panels of privacy fencing leaning against it, and it's already pushing it over. When it gives, it's gonna total my car, take out our backup generator, and just totally tear up my property. I know for a fact they do not have homeowner's insurance. I'm gonna be out of a car. We're on a fixed income, we're both retired. There's no way we can afford another car. We're the ones being stripped because they have nothing. And now, they finally got rid of some of the junk in the yard because the police were out there the other day and I seen him popping door, employing the thing that was cleaning something up. And they told my niece across the street that they are putting in a fourteen-foot trampoline right next to the privacy, right next to the fence in the front yard, which is only three feet from the street. Then they got this big fourteen-foot pool that literally touches the house on the south side and touches the privacy fence on the other side. You cannot walk around it. That is a fire hazard to me. Because if that place catches fire, they can't get around it to give it back to the house.
Is that something Chief Johnson should look at too?
Yeah, we'll follow him around.
Can you, can you please state your name and your address?
She's on, she's on the list, yeah. But if, if Lee's done, we can go.
Yeah.
And it's 312 Garfield Drive, and they live 318. And we have had nothing but problems since they moved in. Um, they don't mow the lawn. They put tarps down or they go around and pull people's area rugs out of the garbage and lay them down in the yard. Okay? That gets rained on, there's mildew, there's rust, it stinks. We have rats, literally rats, coming out of their garage. We had to put, go and buy a special treatment stuff for our house because we had cockroaches almost two inches long coming from their driveway across our driveway, keeping from coming into my house.
I've seen those roaches in the streets.
I mean, they're literally coming across. This is something I shouldn't have to live with.
No, you shouldn't. We're gonna-
And it, to me, and they've got children in there. That's what bothers me the most. They've got children in that house. That is not safe.
I don't know if that's something Jobs and Family Services has been, been involved in.
And it's very upsetting when we can't even sit out in our backyard because it, you know, it's, it's a disaster. We bought the house on 304, which is right on the corner. Well, we didn't buy it. We got it for back taxes. People that used to own it have passed away and their children inherited it. They didn't want it. So we got it, they extended property out. That house has been vacant for twelve years. Nobody in the city even knew it was vacant. Because there were curtains hanging up, the yard was all kept maintained. It is gonna be torn down. We are in the process of that. But as I said, we're on fixed income. We have to do things as funds come in. So we're working on that. And our place is looking nicer than theirs, and they're younger than we are. There's no reason for people to let it go. Then I look across the street and the guy on, in Lampella's property, and that place, they need the health department in there because it is not fit to live in. It is not safe to live in. The doors stay open. Cats wander in and out constantly, um, all over the place. They got anywhere from eight to twelve motorcycles there at all times.
Scamp in the yard.
Eight to ten cars, junk cars and camper carts there all the time. Oh, yeah, the truck, there's a truck out back that's up on blocks that's no tires on it.
Been there forever.
And, and then they have, um, it used to be a horse trailer that was converted to a, to a camper, and that's been sitting there for two years. The guy that owns that trailer is an uncle of the, of the tenants, and he lives in Yitzhunberg, and he just stores it over here. 'Cause he has no place to put it over there. His landlord won't let him have it. Okay, that's his problem. That's not, that shouldn't be our problem. And people are going down Third Street, going to cemetery, have to see that. That is disgusting. And have you ever seen those TV programs, those horror movies where if they do something, the bugs go everywhere? Well, when you move, when you knock their trash cans over, that's exactly what it looks like, a horror movie.
I saw, I saw it in shock.
That's how much is there. That's how bad that place is. The floors of that hole's in them. The one end, they, is not being rented. They're only paying rent for the one end. The other end has been vacant now for, what, four years? Four years, I think. With, I think, four years. And they open the door, they drive the door open, they open the door, and in the winter, they run their motorcycles up in there. Now, I'm sorry, but-
You see the frustration?
And what we're told is, oh, if you don't like it, move. Why should we move? We've lived there for forty-four years.
Well, with, you know, Mr. Shanker's help and our zoning inspector we have and the police working on it, I mean, we all understand your frustration. Believe me, we do.
And what you're telling me, I am not shocked because I saw it all. I saw it all. I took pictures of it all and I know.
And I mean, our place right now is kind of a mess. So we had to tear things up, so we piled down. So we've got things piled up here and there because we're putting tile down.
I, I, I know. It's, there's, there's properties there which absolutely, like I said, should not be.
I mean, and that place was, and that street was fairly nice until Havens has moved in, next door to me. It was, that street was fairly nice. Even Pops' unit that was empty, at least they were keeping the yard mowed. The windows were knocked out of it, but, you know, at least yard was being mowed. Now, since they moved into there, I mean, and they own that place, it, it, it's, it's just dangerous and it's upsetting. And they're, it's not just me that's upset, the neighbors on the other side are upset because there's a privacy fence between their property and Havens'. Ours is chain link on our side. They let their kids, the grandkids climb up, lean over the fence and tease her dogs. You know what they said? Well, one of these days, he's gonna make it all the way over the fence and when their dogs bite him, then we could have their dogs put down. Now, that's the part of the town-
I mean, that would be a dog, a dog warden. You could have the sheriff's department, and it would be a dog warden issue for something like that.
But Tina's, Tina's got two little dark, dark Russells. Those dogs are in their yard. They only come out to go to the bathroom and sometimes help her home. But the, but Havens' grandkids jump over the fence and are teasing those dogs, trying to get those dogs to bite them so that they could have dogs put down.
Oh, I see their complaint. Okay. It's the other way.
Yeah, they're, you know, and this is the type, this is what they, this is what they do. And I'm just, if they just stayed to themselves and keep the area clean, I wouldn't care. I, I don't care what they do inside their house. But if the outside is any indication of what the inside looks like, I don't even wanna go near the inside.
Hopefully, I mean, everything that Ms. Shanker, like I said, is trying to do, we can at least get the outside. We can get the health department involved.
We sent, we sent, I sent all this information to the health department. But I also sent the health department a complaint about that church two years ago. I got, I got the copy of it right here. Two years ago and never heard a word back from them, so, you know.
And it's like, it's like they live on the west end, so they don't care. It's like, okay, it's a ghetto, who cares?
That's exactly, that's exactly how we, that's how we feel. It may not be true, but-
Yeah, no. I hear about the whole, the whole city.
So I do wanna, I do wanna leave you two, two paragraphs in the letter that was sent, which is important.
You've never gotten a judge, oh, I'm awesome.
Jerry.
Jerry.
So this is, this is important because this, this is gonna go around a lot of the red state that we've been encountering. So it states that the property maintenance officer or his designated representative, which could be the fire chief, the police chief, um, the safety service director, anybody could be a representative, um, is authorized to make or cause to be made exterior inspections of all structures or premises located in the city to determine whether such structures conform with provisions of this code. When a property owner denies the property maintenance officer or his designated representative entry onto a property for the purpose of making an exterior inspection, the property maintenance officer may apply for and obtain a search warrant pursuant to the constitutional guidelines in order to gain access on such property. So what we're gonna do is, you know, you're having some concerns about inside where you can't see from the outside. We can get in there now.
Yeah, I, I mean, 'cause I'm, I'm concerned because if that house catches fire, because as nasty as it is, sooner or later, something's gonna happen. Those houses are close out there. Okay? They can't even get around to the back of the house because the pool is literally a chino house and a chino fence.
So we have-
I thought that there was supposed to be a five-foot clearance around with any tools.
Yep. So we're gonna be able to get in there now and do that. So that's gonna, and if they won't let us in, we'll get a search warrant. The second paragraph is, you know, whoever violates the exterior property maintenance code or fails to comply with any final order upon conviction, um, is guilty of a minor misdemeanor or a first offense. But then it states, "A separate offense shall be committed each day on which a violation occurs or continues." So like, let's say tomorrow they're convicted, each day is gonna be a separate offense. So that can get very costly. Um, so if you put those two paragraphs together, what we're gonna try to do is, one, get in on the properties, see all the violations, and two, really go to court and hammer, hammer them for them. So we can, you know, solve some of the issues you're having here.
Well, I hope they got bolt cutters because they have, literally, they have the front gate chained with double padlocks on it so nobody can come onto the property.
Yeah, when they go somewhere.
Literally. When there's nobody home, they double chain, they got a chain on it with a double padlock so that nobody can go on their property. So, you know, they're gonna have to go in with bolt cutters. You know, and it's just, it, it is frustrating because, like I said, we've lived there for forty-four years. We've seen a lot of good, we've seen, we've seen it go through with some bad skirts. We've seen it come back and do good. I worked with his wife for, what, two years to get that west end kind of stove program so that the landlords had no excuse not to have the money to fix their places up. We worked and we went door to door. We spent hours and hours and hours on getting petitions and signatures and everything. So that there's no excuse for the landlords not to fix it up because that grand money is there. All they have to do is use it. But they have to follow the guidelines. And then the city has to enforce the guidelines of the ordinances that are in effect. So that the landlords know they have to fix them up, they have to keep them up.
And that's-
You know, and it's-
We can't, unfortunately, we can't go back because things did not follow through with, that previous year. But with everyone now, I think it's gonna be a forward motion.
What we're asking for is our city council and our mayor and our safety service, our police to help us.
And that's, that's what we've, they've-
And we'll help you.
We've started doing, so.
So it's, this is something that's gotta be worked together or it's not gonna be done. We can't be at each other's throats. So that's not the point of this at all. 'Cause I do get emotional about stuff. I get pissed off. But I understand that this is different. We gotta, we gotta try to figure this out together or we're not gonna get anywhere.
And Lee, Dina has done, um, well, you know, the frustrations that have gone on for years. I've been very happy with the progress she's made and the stuff she's done and the time and hours that she's put into this to move stuff to a point where things can happen. So I hope what she's doing with the court system has some real, real impact.
Keep us informed so we know what's going on, progress. 'Cause I wanna know. 'Cause I don't wanna get, well, I had to one landlord, we had a bunch of work done on our house, and they put a sump pump in and all this stuff. This guy comes over, he's like, almost yelling at me, talking about, well, you're pumping, pumping water onto my thing. I'm like, man, the county put this in, you gotta deal, you gonna deal with it, so go ask them. You know, and he got kinda smart and he, I, I got his mind right, he gonna be back. But, uh, it's ridiculous. But in the meantime, he got three portions there, this old brick is all crumbled in. And he ain't doing nothing about that. He worried about, of the water on his, on his, uh, stone grass.
I believe that's the one that he's gonna send the letter to, the last one he told you, where it's crumbling. Yeah.
My thank you for coming in because I've been on council since 2013 and I knew there were some problems. I've never heard-
It's gotten worse.
-detail.
It's gotten worse. And I knew, we, I, I've been doing this here for about a month, the last month or so every day. Trying to make sure I get all information, all the addresses, the owners, the ordinance. I got it wrote down by each house, which ordinance they are breaking. I know which one it is. And so I expect something to be done.
Which, I mean, like I said, work together.
We're gonna work together.
And anything, you know, is public record with anything that's filed or the progress, the letters that have been sent. So anytime-
Well, I'm sure all y'all got my number, so you can just call me.
Or you can call Tracy anytime.
Yeah, I call Tracy. I'll-
He does, he does call me.
Eleven, eleven thirty, nine or something.
It doesn't matter.
He ain't even up.
I know, I know most of the people.
He won't answer.
I ain't, okay, eleven thirty.
And you'll see me, I'm always out looking. I like to get in the car and take a look.
Well, hop on mine, hop through and grab it. I'll go with you.
We, um, we took care of the trash bins. We got them switched over to Republic, got rid of the lake one, got rid of the cyclone, most of them. So now we're gonna try and work on the outside and then whatever problems comes up next, we'll work on that and then keep going.
There was one more, there was one more issue that I brought up some years back. I've been bringing up every year. That land is behind my house. It's actually, they say it's in Bay Township. And we've been trying to, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
We've been trying to get it cut. I've been trying, begging somebody to cut that for ten years. And now it's going into a friggin' forest back there. And it's right by the Ottawa County Advocacy building, right behind there. And if you go in the front of that build, the front on Fremont Road there, that yard ain't cut either. It's just deep. So whoever owns that, they, the same person owns that front house there too. And that, that needs to be, something needs to be done with that. 'Cause it's just more and more animals with that going up like that. And that, with being Bay Township, we can only, we've sent letters.
They've got no zoning there or stuff.
Yeah, we've sent letters.
Well, that, that easement, that, that's what we're talking about.
We got the easement there. Hell, Mario takes care of all that. He, he cuts all that every week. He does it on his own. He, he don't ask for nothing. He just wanna help things look better. You know, so I will share with something we can do with that before it gets any bigger and out of control. I don't know if there is or, but-
We just cut it again like we did before.
Well, you, you guys cut the easement?
No, no, we just cut the whole thing.
But you're gonna need a big, um-
We need a tractor.
We need a boat hauler.
Especially 'cause I know the Ottawa County Advocacy there is trying to buy that building. And they want, I want a board there. And we don't wanna look at all that out there. Especially when they're serving kid lunches and that kinda thing. It would be nice to have a cut. I mean, we could get it cut once. I would do anything in my power to keep it cut.
'Cause you've already talked to Bay before, didn't you? Thought you'd already gone that route.
Yeah. I mean, we could get it cut once. I'll pay somebody to cut it. I don't even care at this point. That's for the cut. I'll go take up a collection in the hood. She cut, yeah, now we're gonna have coyotes in.
Well, we do have coyotes out there as it is right now. We have one there right there on the end of Third Street.
Crazy, man.
Down by Rose Lane in the cemetery. We've got, we've got a pair of coyotes. I just, I've watched them twice now. And they're coming across, 'cause I've come home down Fremont Road when I worked at Fremont and watched them come across into the fields out behind the garden, sitting on there. So we do have coyotes down there. And with all these small game, you know, coming in now because of the groundhogs, we've got stumps which we inherited one. While we were, we about, we redoing our back and re-tiling, we pulled a board off of our shed. And while it was off, um, skunked the side- shed, and while it was off, um, Skunk decided to make his home underneath, so now we've got two tri, extra cave hits. And we've got, like I said, we've got rats next door coming out of the woodpile that got up against the chain link fence next to the garage. Um, all of that stuff is just bringing in the bigger garments, and that makes me even more fearful, not so much because of me, I'm not afraid of them, but there's so many children out there. And let's face it, coyotes these days are not afraid. They'll go after a child, a small child. And the parents out there, they don't watch those kids. Those kids run wild. I mean, when you see a two-year-old walking down the street with nothing, you're dangerous.
That might be a health department nuisance.
Yeah, well, we called them, we called them, we took them out, they picked them up, took them to their parents, but the thing is, what could happen in that timeframe? But you wouldn't have to worry so much if there weren't wild animals running around. And, you know, we already said you have a...
We get that cut once, I'll make sure this thing's cut. One way or the other.
Well, thank you for reading your concerns and listening to everything.
I appreciate you guys giving your time and event, and let's work together and try to get this done. I know, I know it don't happen overnight, I understand.
And, and Ms. Shanker will know before any of council about what the legal standard is, but like I said...
Well, I'll be in touch with you.
Just give us, just give us a little bit of time...
Oh, yeah, I understand.
...to work through these, these days, um, and so once we can get them filed in court, we'll see, um, what we can have court force and really try to get them cleaned up.
And it may just take one or two people that actually have a finding and stuff against them to get the word out to everybody else, so, hopefully.
All right, thanks a lot, ma'am. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Well, move on to, is that the only...
Yeah.
She spoke for public. Okay. Um, move on to executive officer reports. Council, you have a new resolution this evening. It is twenty-two dash five, it's on for its first reading. That is for the playgrounds, um, that we revised on last meeting that there would be a new resolution. It is time sensitive as the grant filing is, I believe tomorrow, it's due by four o'clock. So administration has asked that you pass that on its first reading if you can. Also, this weekend is the Walley Fest. Parade is on Saturday and it's extended, it's like a premiere, so it's been out. Um, it's at 10 a.m. And just wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. So that's all I have. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, first of all, I would like to congratulate the class of 2022 on being the second greatest class to ever graduate from Port Clinton High School behind the class of 1989.
Ninety-nine.
Okay. We'll talk about that later. Um, as you know, obviously, it's close to Memorial Day weekend. Spring is here, soon to follow are the Mayflies. Uh, we've begun conversation with First Energy to do the normal Mayfly, turn the lights off, city limits to city limits, east-west from the railroad tracks north. Um, right now, we're targeting the week of May thirteenth, or June thirteenth, excuse me, June thirteenth. Again, we've gotta give them a couple weeks' advance notice, we're guessing, no one really knows. If you have, anybody has a better idea of when the Mayflies are gonna show up, we'll, we'll be happy to, to, to work with that, but we're looking at the, again, the week of, of May thirteenth to get the lights started to, to be shut off. You know, we've talked about this at a, at great length internally, but we're still in a, in a staffing shortage. Um, in our full-time staff, we're, we're down one person right now, um, and it'll be sometime before we're able to fill that position, and we still have not had any applicants for the seasonal positions. Um, again, the seasonal positions, we'd like to have at least one person, 18 years old with a driver's license. Um, the other one or two can be 16, um, as long as we have that driver. Uh, do things like weed whip, uh, mow, uh, trash, restrooms, things of that nature. That would really, really help us out and open up availability for, for other folks, the full-time staff to do some other things. Council, in front of you tonight, you have a liquor license transfer request, and I'd just like to give you the, the background history on that one. Um, there is, as you may all know, the Island House is a condominium. There are 39 units, including what we would call the two restaurants that are part of that facility. Of those 39 units, 13 have sold, the remainder are for sale. There is a party that's very much interested, they have an accepted offer to purchase those remaining unsold units, um, and put in a, a very nice restaurant. Jason Lou, the restaurant would be Jay Lou, uh, they're in Dublin, Worthington, and soon to be Port Clinton. He has a second restaurant called Woody's that will be coming in a later, later time period. Everything's pinging, they're hinging on, on the liquor permit. It's currently still under the name of the previous restaurant, Matt someone, I forgot who I was saying, I'm sorry, under the affair. The request tonight is to transfer it back to the Island House so they can close the property. Jay Lou can open up the restaurant, it's an Asian fusion restaurant. He has won tons of awards in the Columbus area for his cuisine. I was down there a couple weeks ago. It's gonna be a tremendous, tremendous addition, uh, to not only the Island House, but our downtown and, and our community. I know people have said that about other things in the past, but this gentleman is legit. He showed up with a team of 25 people, including architects, engineers, head chefs. They're, they're ready to rock and roll and not only fixed up the restaurant, but the, the building itself. It'll still remain a condominium. They will have majority ownership of, of that building. Um, so again, I would ask that council take the appropriate action tonight to, to move that liquor transfer, uh, forward. Before, Ms. Phillips should ask, how are we doing on the Fourth of July fundraising and our mile of dollars? Right now, we're about 40% there. Um, again, Fourth of July is rapidly approaching. Um, there are two events coming up here, one on the first of June at Bistro 163 from five until seven, pancakes for pyrotechnics, drive-through fee, free will offering. Again, that's Wednesday, January first, from five to seven, drive-through at Bistro. And then two weeks later, on the fifteenth, also from five to seven, at à la carte after hours, pancake and sausage fee, free will offering with all of those proceeds going to the Fourth of July. In addition to that, we have other events planned. There's a 5K run in the morning. Um, there's a, a, United Ways having a duck derby, another fundraiser for them. You can go to their website to order ducks if you'd like to do that. The car show's coming back, food trucks down there, Voices of Freedom concert, family dance party, and then of course, the fireworks at 10 p.m. Mom kicks off this weekend. Uh, the, the tables and chairs and stage are all ready. Over the next couple of days, you'll see the lights and the sound, um, going up. Uh, Friday night is the, the first performance. There's a website out there, we're still working on a final, other touches for later on in the season, but the sound is set, the entertainment is all set. We've got the library coming up to do their thing as they normally do. Uh, the Oak Harbor High School Performance Group is coming in on June first to do a performance, so people from outside our community are coming in to use that. The Greater Port Clinton Arts Council has the Fireland Symphony coming in for at least one performance, potentially three. Um, so it's a, it's a growing list of, of activities, and we'll get that out there as soon as it's, as soon as it's finalized. Sent out text messages to the members of council, but the, the parking lot at the city pier at Jefferson Street is closed, uh, through the Walley Festival, not only because of Walley Festival activities because, but also because it is a construction site. Um, we have had issues the past couple of days of individuals moving the barricades. Um, the police are ticketing those folks and charging them with trespassing, um, so just be aware of that. Also, the walkway is completely off limits, it is a construction zone. Um, we've had individuals move those barricades or climb over them and get on the walkway. Those individuals as well are being ticketed and cited for trespassing. Um, you know, hate to be the, the, the one here talking about tickets and so forth, but we have passed the li, line of no return on, on grass holes. Uh, enough warnings, three, four years of warnings. Uh, Mr. Colson and I have placed door hangers on homes. Um, that's, that's not getting the, the, the results that we hoped. Citations are beginning to, to be issued, uh, ranging in price from 150 to $500. So, uh, if you should get any calls on that, and I'm sorry that a lot of these folks left. The land bank met recently and have identified four properties within the city limits that meet their criteria of being delinquent on their taxes and vacant. Um, they have begun the foreclosure process on those four properties. I'm not at liberty just yet to release those, those addresses, um, but again, this is all subject to change if they pay the taxes after getting the notice. If someone moves in, which we don't anticipate, but again, four properties within the city are part of, uh, the, the land bank procedures at this point. There was an electrical issue about, uh, five, seven days ago at the wastewater treatment plant. It's, it's been made safe, it's been made operable, uh, but it's a temporary fix. We're still, the guys down there are looking into what the long-term repairs are going to be. It's going to be a very expensive proposition. Um, as we get more dollars involved, we'll, we'll inform everybody on that, but the wastewater treatment facility is safe, it is running, um, it's just gonna need a little TLC. I would like to congratulate Rod Miller. We all know Rod is the high school marching band director. He's been in town for 18 years. Uh, this weekend is kind of bittersweet, is his final two performances, the Walley Festival parade, as well as then the, the Memorial Day parade. The Memorial Day parade will be his last official act, so if you see Mr. Miller, you know, tell him congratulations. He's done a, a wonderful, wonderful job, uh, bringing back our, our high school band program. Mr. Colson and I had a very good meeting last night with the, very good meeting to a point. Uh, had a very good meeting with the, the Friends of the Cemeteries. Um, the only downside, as I saw it, was it was held in the mausoleum, um, so that was a little nerve-wracking for, for me personally, but, but again, it was a great, great conversation. The, those are dedicated group of, of ladies in our community, as I mentioned in our State of the City address. The Friends groups, whether it's the cemeteries or the parks, fill a need that, that the city just, we don't have the resources to do. But like every other organization in town, they're, they're getting up in age, and they even had a long conversation about this last year. They're in desperate need of so, some additional new faces in their group. So if, if you individually, anyone in this room or know someone who has an interest in,